Guys, we bring this matter back to the board and open it up for public. I'm going to remind everybody the rules that were set out at the beginning of the meeting. Each individual have two minutes to speak. We're really going to try to eliminate cutback and repetitive comments so that we can get through everybody who wants to speak. And the comments and questions that should be made tonight should be related to this application that's just been presented, if that's what you're here for. We're going to go down the list. After I'm done calling the people who signed in and they've had an opportunity to speak, then anybody else who wishes to speak will be given an opportunity as well.
There was a request made on behalf of a few people. There would be somebody representing them. It will be providing that gentleman some extra time on behalf of those five, six individuals.
If you have a letter to read, then the record will give you the opportunity to complete that. Okay? All right. So...
I can see it's a sheet for my attorney.
Yeah, you're still going to have an opportunity to speak. We're just going to go with the order that the sign in and then you'll come up after that. All right, so the first individual that signed in was Dan Myers. One other protocol that we go through with public comment, because a lot of your comments, questions, or concerns, you'd like the board to take into consideration when they make their decision. We swear members of the public in for comments so that they can be considered testimony. And that is because sometimes you give your personal observations. The board can't consider that as testimony unless you've been sworn. Okay? So I'm going to ask you, Mr. Myers, M-E-Y-E-R-S, correct?
Correct.
Please raise your right hand. You swear or affirm the comments or testimony you're about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, Mr. Myers.
Yes. Good evening. My guest is Mr. Myers. Thank you very much.
Mr. Myers, would you please tell me with your address, please?
Yes, my address is 12 Arrowhead Drive. Like I said, my name is Dan Myers. I'm a member of the Arrowhead community, which is going to be intimately affected by this development. I have, first of all, two questions, a few comments about the development, and then several issues that I would like to bring up to the board about this development. The two questions is, is the development appropriate? Is this redevelopment the appropriate redevelopment for this site? To me, this development project appears to require several waivers and variances for -- no variances, but waivers for approval. It feels to me as though the developers are trying to fit a square peg into a round hole. Is this project a benefit? The second question I'm going to have is, is this project a benefit or detriment to the Arrowhead and the East Sham Township or community? And I think it's the planning board's responsibility to consider the community when it comes down to these applications. So, at a recent gathering of the residents of the Arrowhead neighborhood of the Arrow community, organized by the Arrowhead Neighborhood Association, we were able to discuss the redevelopment of the properties on South Maple Avenue. I believe we were in agreement that redevelopment isn't a bad thing, if done properly and with the concerns of nearby communities in mind. I believe we all agreed that the present property redevelopment on South Maple Avenue was too large and may be palatable at a smaller scale. We do understand the importance of a vibrant, bustling Main Street, and that that is pedestrian and commuter friendly. While we can appreciate the qualifications of the township officials, developers, engineers, and planners who have helped develop this vision of the township's future, we are not convinced that the needs of the surrounding community are fully considered in this redevelopment and are true to the 2020 Vision Plan as the template for our redevelopment efforts in East Sham Township. This is reason for public input at the planning portion of this project. It is important that you weigh the benefits of this project versus any detriment to the community. We believe that the planning board needs to address the quality of life issues that will affect the residents of the community. To us, this is most important criteria. It should be in the minds of the members of this board when they are deciding on the fate of this project. What can and what should be there are two completely different things. This is where the concerns of the community come into play. Please work with us to make the right decision. While profits are important, the people and the community are more important. When this is built...
Thank you. Please let him continue. He's almost out of time.
Yeah, so when this is built, it is built. Then we deal with the consequences. If we want our voices heard, we need to speak and be heard now. After studying the 2020 Vision Plan, I must ask, how will this project truly contribute to the 2020 Vision Plan? As none of the public suggestions include apartments on South Maple Avenue. Actually, the site we are discussing tonight is never mentioned as a site for redevelopment in the 2020 Vision Plan, and notably, no mention of apartments was ever made at this site. So, okay, I'm going to go through my issues now. The first issue is traffic and parking. In the East Sham 2020 Plan, Vision Plan, the top three traffic and pedestrian problems are directly within the area of improvements: Maple and Center Avenues, Route 73 and Center Avenue, and Main and Maple. Please, and I'm just going to ask the questions and just get through this list, and we can answer them later. Please provide us with details on traffic engineer reports and how the increase in volume will be addressed at these sites and the pedestrian-friendly intersections that we're talking about here that need to be modified according to the 2020 Plan. What is the current level of service of the road, and what will it be after the work? And I think we did hear that answer. That's essentially a failing or E-rated intersection, which is pretty poor. From a traffic survey, can we tell me how will street parking impact the flow of traffic in the area of redevelopment? If on-street parking is not deemed appropriate for the site, will the elimination of parking affect size of this project? And I guess it won't. How will the increase in volume of traffic affect emergency response times in our community and the surrounding areas? So we are concerned about emergency response times. Has there been input from police department as to the issues that commuters and residents will have to face due to the increased traffic? In other words, cut-throughs and speeding through the community. Issue two: drainage and its effect on water flow and flooding in a redevelopment area. Impervious coverage or elimination of impervious coverage, as we know, can cause flooded streets and flooded basements. How is this addressed by the engineers specifically? We are concerned about flooding in local areas, including the administration building, who store much of their equipment in the basement of that building. And it's very important that they have that building and be dry, and if they have problems with flooding, it can be a major issue. What stormwater measures are being provided to meet the governing criteria? Our understanding is that the new projects are required to provide reductions of 50%, 75%, and 80% to the two, 10, and 100-year storm events respectively that are leaving the project. What type of measures are developers of buildings providing to meet these criteria? And do the receiving existing storm ratings have adequate size for any increase in runoff? What are the effects of eliminating the retention pond, as we have discussed a little bit? If the builders are removing the basin, they need to provide new infrastructure to mitigate flow. And the next thing, and it's a very important thing that hasn't been mentioned here at all, is that there's a hydrocarbon plume, an oil spill, that is seeping into the groundwater that is being remediated at 8 Oak Avenue, which is at the Township Garage. It's been going on for many years, and the Board of Education has paid and is paying tens of thousands of dollars for remediation. It is very close to the site of redevelopment. Was the NJDEP contacted about this project, and what was their response? Have the engineers studied flow direction of the project and its effect on the hydrocarbon remediation? Have the developers considered green roofs and water-permeable cement to help in drainage? So that's drainage and water flow. Third issue: strain on public utilities, water pressure, sewer, water, and gas. Due to strains on utilities from this project, the scope -- sorry about that. The question is, is will the water and sewage be affected by the community at large, the community that's surrounding there? So will the utilities be affected? We expect an increase in cost of water and sewer because of the increased supply costs and over time imminent increase in future capacity and functional upgrades due to the overwhelming amount of building that is going to be going on in this township over the next couple of years. Issue number four: not fitting into the community. This is a four-story building, which nobody has really said anything about, and will it fit into the community? I don't see it fitting very well into the surrounding areas that it's being put into. To me, looking at some of the code from Section 16068 of Code 1882010, it says here that the maximum impervious for a 1.5 to 3 acres is 60%. They have 71%, so I just want to get some verification on that. Building height for a three-story -- for a building height for a 1.5 to 3-acre lot should be three stories, and they want a four-story building. So I don't understand where that is. And then the other question is, is parking spots in the front, they'll also be occupied by patrons and by Board of Education staff and other people that just want to park there. So as far as real parking spots, I think they need to be taken off as far as viable spots for that spot. And I know we're very close, I mean, we're very close that they're meeting the requirements still, but now we're talking about having 54 apartments with two people, at least per apartment or more. So we're seeing, as a community, you have more than 100 cars. Now, how they got the requirement of 92, this is what you guys do. Issue number five: environmental impact. Has there been a study from New Jersey Department of Protection, NJDEP, on the effects of redevelopment of this site on the remediation efforts ongoing at the administration garage? Okay, and issue number six is, how can development help our community? So will the developers in the township work with the Arrowhead communities to fix and maintain all the lighting up and down Maple Avenue, which has been in disrepair for a long time? This will increase the safety, is presently embarrassing, and unsafe for the residents of our community and any future residents. Park and recreation. Enhancing the livability of neighborhoods was a big theme in the 2020 Vision Plan. The 2020 Vision Plan also says that the quality of life within each neighborhood should be protected with a plan to enhance parks, greenways, waterways, sidewalks, trail connectivity, street trees, traffic calming, and pedestrian safety. Any or all of any green spaces that is presently the property is being considered for redevelopment is being eliminated. How will you help us define space for recreational areas within the Arrowhead community? We would like to see added sidewalks along some of the streets in our community, which don't happen, one being Munger Avenue and parts of Oak Avenue. And of course, if this is approved by the residents and discussed with the township officials. We would like to see the paving and maintenance of the roads in the Arrowhead community that will see more traffic due to the changes in traffic flow caused by this project. We would also like to see the fixing of sidewalks and curbs in the Arrowhead community. Issue number seven is, how will the building of this complex have required affordable housing requirements due to the Mount Laurel decision? We would also like to see a possible fund set up to deal with unforeseen issues like drainage, EPA remediation, purchase of green space, assurance of infrastructure improvements. We believe that there's a lot to be worked out here. It looks like there's a lot of waivers to be given and that no approvals should be given until this is a solid project with all these things in place. Thank you very much for your time. And I'm going to go.
After we've heard all comments, I think collectively, because a lot of them are going to be similar, we're going to hear everybody out, and then the board and with the applicant and all professionals will address your comments. I can't understand the letter writing the last name, Joe Barbe?
Barbara Givon.
Thank you. We've seen you here before. Would you please spell your last name for the record?
Yes. B-A-R-B-A-G-I-O, B like Victor, A-N-N-I.
Barbara Givon.
Yes. 21 Florence Ave.
Mr. Givon, Barbara Givon, would you please raise your right hand? Do you swear or affirm the comments and/or testimony you're about to provide to the board to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I will.
Thank you, sir.
First, I'd like to say that I agree with everything that Dan said, and I'm here basically to speak about the traffic. But before I do that, this panel made me a statement that we were all made aware of this before city council approved it. Well, that is absolutely untruthful.
I just want to say, that's not what the statement was. There was an opportunity for public comment along the way. There was no comment, no statement made as to whether or not you received notice. That's the notice that goes down as part of that process, is governed by statute.
I just want to let you know that we were not notified of any building that was going on in this site. When they put the apartments up on Main Street, all the people in Heritage Village, at least the first couple of blocks, were notified that they were going to do a building there. No one in our developer was notified that a building was going up. I just wanted to make that clear. The other thing I like, now, I like to talk about traffic. I'm not a traffic engineer, haven't been educated in traffic, but I've lived in this area for 40 years, and I have not been able to get on Maple Avenue for the last five years. Anybody that lives in this township knows that Maple Avenue and Main Street is the busiest intersection in town. Also, I'd like to do a little math for their engineer. There's 55 apartments going in this area, and I'm figuring maybe 30 of those are married. So that's 85 people. They say only 31 cars are going to come out into the Main Avenue. All the other people are unemployed. I worry about how I was going to get my rent. That's absolutely ridiculous. The people coming out of the development, if they want to go north on Maple Avenue, they have to go through two lanes of traffic. And anybody will tell you that tries to get on Maple Avenue, you have to pray that someone will let you out if you want to get on Maple Avenue. So now you're asking, this person exiting the driveway, exiting the parking lot, wants to go north, to go through two lanes of traffic. Also, the parking spaces on the front of the building, think about it, somebody wants to get into that parking space, they have to back up into the parking space. Parallel parking in South Jersey is something that we don't do. It could possibly take you 45 minutes to parallel park. Therefore, if you know what Maple Avenue looks like now, the traffic is from 70 all the way to Center Avenue, which is completely backed up during business hours. The other thing, if one of those people in those parking places want to go north on Maple Avenue, you're asking them to make a U-turn on Maple Avenue. You know what the possibilities are making a U-turn on Maple Avenue? Almost negligible, it'll never happen. So you have to understand the traffic problems that are in that area. We have a ballpark there, we have baseball games, you have buses going in and out to Evan's School. It's unbelievable. There's no way that the traffic from this development is not going to cause major problems on Maple Avenue. The other thing is, I want you to take a look at everything that this township is doing. They're putting out 25 apartments on Main Street, one half a block away from the intersection. They're putting up 300 apartments where Kmart used to be, which is only, what, three blocks away from this intersection? Where is all this traffic going to go? Folks, you have to think about our community. I mean, it's, you know, you live in this town, you know there's not one street in this whole town that's not already overused by traffic. The traffic on Maple Avenue will not stand anymore vehicles. I thank you for your time.
Let me go to the next person. Was it not adequately notified? I mean, what issue that Mr. Gianni bringing?
If they are not within 200 feet of the property line.
All right, so if you are not within the 200 feet of the property line, that's why you need that notification. That's the requirement by the organization.
That's actually, it's a municipal land use law. It's a statutory requirement. Property owners within 200 feet of the properties that are subject to the application are required to be provided notice. Anybody outside of that?
Mr. wanted to say. For clarification's sake, that is for this hearing.
But no one was notified. There's people here that are within 200 feet, and they were not notified.
The 200-foot list is prepared by the tax assessor. The applicant submits a request, the tax assessor, to prepare that list, and the applicant's required to notify everybody on that list.
I asked him, the gentleman who owns the Taylor shop directly across the street home of his public gaze, I don't know if he's here tonight, but I asked him if he was notified. And he missed the reprieve at 12th Street from where this building, he was not moved up to the mic.
Could I just explain something, though, please?
Yes.
In accordance with the law, and this is municipal land use law, it's not township ownership, and that's what we go by, the applicant is required to request from the tax assessor a list of everyone within 200 feet. That is from, the block and lots are included in this application. They are required to send those notices certified mail. In order to be heard here tonight, they have to present the certified mail receipts to Mrs. Kenny to show that everyone has been notified. The fact that someone didn't get it doesn't mean they weren't notified. And that is because, if you -- no, no, excuse me, because --
I didn't work.
Yeah, I know, but your rest of your comedy. Because, I mean, there's a case of me, I want to explain that. I recently received a certified mail letter. If I did not go to the post office to pick it up, I would not have gotten it and not received my notice. So the proof that the notice has been sent is what is required to be submitted to Mrs. Kenny. It doesn't mean somebody had to receive it, because they may not have gone to the post office to pick it up. But they have to present to the township that the notices were sent.
How many were?
So just to address your question, the tailor across the street, he has been notified, he's in the list.
He was sent a notice. Whether or not he signed for it, we can't verify. All right, that's not, the applicant's obligation is to provide the notice to all the individuals on the list that's provided to them by the assessor.
And it's only based on that list. Because I may think I'm within 200 feet, I may be 205 feet.
Well, I'm right behind the school board, and I wasn't notified.
We're not arguing it, but the thing is, it's the certified list from the tax assessor. So that's all we can check on.
We have a list here, we can check it after.
3 Florence Ave? It's right behind the school board.
Say it again?
Hartman.
Sorry. But...
What is the address?
3 Florence Ave, I'm right behind the school board.
It may be that the school board property is that far enough that you're not within 200.
Yeah, not within that. 8 Oak Avenue is the next one.
Yeah, see, it's not, and so the issue is not that the applicant did not notify, he has to notify within some corners of the hall.
And I'm looking at the list that the assessors provided. They provided a 200-foot list for each individual block and lot that was the subject of this application.
I got a question for you. Does a building stop to 200 feet?
No, it's 200 feet, whether there's a building, a property line, any improvement, a vacant ground, it's 200.
Well, my yard is right off to Maple Ave. It's one building to Maple Ave. That's what I don't understand.
We would have to ask the assessor why, how he calculated it and why it wasn't on the list. The applicant provided notice to the certified list from the assessor, and that's what the law requires of the applicant.
I could throw a ball to where the building...
Sir, I'm not going to debate it with you. That's, we've explained that that's the way the law works. We have the list from the assessor. That's all the applicant, we can't, this board can't force the applicant to go beyond that. Next person was Dave Johnson. Good evening, Mr. Johnson. I'm sure everybody knows how to spell your name, so I'll just ask you to raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony or comments you were about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you, sir. Will you give your address, sir?
22 Flintstone Drive. Some of these questions are repeats. We've lived at 22 Flintstone Drive for 43 years, and our most recent experience of traffic through our neighborhood was when the circle was removed and Arrowhead Development, the people coming off of Route 73 on Main Street heading for the business district, used our neighborhood as a shortcut to avoid Main Street and Maple Avenue. I just wanted to know whether the traffic impact study addressed impact on streets coming in to Maple Avenue, such as Oak Avenue and Munger Avenue. Whether the traffic study included that aspect of it or not, but that definitely is a control point that the township should look after. I don't know whether that can even be done, since the streets are public waste. Second point is, all the units in the building that is contemplated are accessible to handicapped people. Are the units specifically designed for handicapped individuals? Are they adaptable to a person that wants to rent something on the third floor? Are there any level income units proposed for this 55-unit building? I don't know what the COA comes into play in this case or not, but that should also be addressed. They're the questions I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Please spell your last name for the record.
L-U-T-N-E-R.
And your address?
12 Oak Court.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the comments and/or testimony you're about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
I had a couple of questions relating to the type of paving and the drainage, which has already been addressed by other people. What I would like to express is that the town council has been seeking rehabilitation and redevelopment for several years, and I think we are in a situation where there's a convergence of several properties that are applying for approval to build, and it's maybe it's kind of overwhelming. But I think something that I hope residents will consider is that this area of Maple, of South Maple, is, I don't know, I hate to say that it's a blatant, that it's a dead area, but it doesn't seem like there's much that works there. There's the insurance building on the corner that seems to thrive, and then the building just south of 24 South Maple, from that point on, there are buildings which house offices and professionals that seem to be fine. But this area seems to be an issue. And it certainly is not used to the maximum capacity, it's not generating the type of tax revenue that it's capable of. I realize that there are issues with traffic. I would hope that there would be a way to control that, to control some of the through traffic, that people that are cutting through on Maple Avenue to avoid Route 73. Maybe that can be done, maybe it can't, I don't know. But I hope that there is a way that will satisfy the residents, that will allow this project or another project to go forward. project or another project to go forward. I think that we, that this, the redevelopment that's being proposed needs to go forward, and I hope that the residents' concerns can be answered and we can go forward with these projects. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Rosemary Bernardi. Bear with me just a second. I have to take notes. So, it takes me a second to catch up on the writing. Ms. Bernardi, please, spell your last name for the record.
It's Bernardi.
Bernardi, I apologize.
That's right. B-E-R-N-A-R-D-I.
And your address?
10 Halifax Court East.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony or comments you are about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good evening. I just want to add, I have a couple of comments. I just happened to have the opportunity to actually drive on South Maple this afternoon, around 4 o'clock. I thought I should just really just, you know, see the traffic, see the, see the property and just kind of experience it. I'm a Nechem resident, I live in Kings Grant. I've cut through that area all the time, so I wanted to see what was going to be going on. It just so happened that it happened to be raining. It was that big torrential downpour, and I guess it was around 4:17, and I actually was coming down 73, hit South Maple, did that little cutoff to South Maple Avenue. So, around 4:17, I went off to South Maple. Well, I was stopped because the traffic was already backed up, torrential downpour. And I happened to be taking some pictures because I saw the water to the right of me just collect down on South Maple Avenue. So, as I'm stopping there and taking my pictures, well, it took me approximately to, I'm sorry, 4:17 up to, I believe it was 4:20, 23-ish, to actually get to where the property is at 24 South Maple. Happened to take some pictures. I apologize, you can't really see them, but the water is collecting in the street in front of 24 South Maple, and we don't have any buildings right now, so it's really a vacant property. I happened to take, pull over and actually go to the retention basin that you guys are going to be replacing. I heard earlier testimony saying that it is not being used. However, there's water in the retention basin. And this was really just from that initial rain from that downfall. I didn't get to see what it actually was in the basin after the total downfall, which was probably like 5:30. So, just in the 10 minutes that way, so this is how much water was actually in the retention basin. So, I heard some testimony, so my really, my main concern is in terms of, one, the storm runoff plan, the storm management plan for this property. I understand that, you know, they're going to be doing, replacing the storm management of the retention basin and actually then moving it off through a drain, from what I understand, into the back property of Paranormal, if that's correct. Is that correct? So, my question is, are we going to be able to handle it? Only because the existing structure right now, there isn't any property there. So, the impervious surface, you know, it should be just going floating through the, through the, through the land, and it's not. So, that is my main concern. My concern is really, from a neighborhood perspective, is, okay, we built this structure, what happens to the properties? For example, Mr. Myers mentioned about the property across the street, the school district property. Again, if you are building and have storm water issues already without any existing structure, you build a structure, you have storm water issues, it flows over across the street to the township building. And as Mr. Myers had mentioned, the school district does use that first, that basement floor for a lot of their, their storage of supplies and etc. So, when you talked about neighbors, and I know Mr. Davis was nice enough to look at the neighbors, I guess, next to the property, I think we need to look, and as the gentleman said earlier about the 200 feet, look at their neighborhood, look more about the other neighbors, not just the ones adjacent to the property. My other concern I have, I guess, when the gentleman was talking about the two-foot off a grade in terms of storm management, what is the impact? You are, I don't know if everyone realizes that the property over our multi-gate may apartments, they're actually built up high, and that property was adjacent to the school district property. So, in doing that, the school district then had to allow for an easement for storm water for a drain in the back. So, I'm concerned if we're building up a higher level to the two feet so that people have the first floor are not being able, so you're building this up higher, so you have that issue, which will create an additional storm water drain issue. So, those are my, and then my other concern with the storm water drain management issue is that the existing promenade structure, which Mr. Davis said, you know, that created, and evidently, I understand, an issue for the terror of neighborhood because that was done with underground pipes, which I believe is going to be used in this project, too. So, again, my concern is really with the storm management drain, that you really address these issues. In addition to the traffic, which I think they alluded to earlier, other people have alluded to, so my traffic was another concern. So, I won't take up any more of your time, but I appreciate your, I have to.
Mr. Sheer, please state your, spell your last name for the record, please.
S-H-E-R-D-A-R-D-I.
Your address?
184 Munger Avenue, Arrowhead.
Thank you. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony or comments you are about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
This is the first time I've been at one of these meetings, so excuse me if I'm not in the right questions or not. But this, these are proposals, that nothing has been put in gold, correct?
This is the application, it's about to get to court.
Okay. I was offended as a resident in Marlton by Mr. Davis saying there will be such and such. Everyone else presented the information that said these were proposals, and I'm sure the day that the town council is aware that these are proposals. So, that's the one thing that offended me. Second, the traffic situation, I was on 70, as I was on Maple last night. Between 3:00 and 5:00, 5:00, 3:00 and 6:00 o'clock, it's nothing, let's say, from, from Main Street to Center Boulevard, it's steady traffic. I live on Munger, as I indicated, I tried to go down my street, nobody wanted to move until the light went. It's not against, as far as I know, it's not against the law to block it, block every street. So, once, once there's going to be more cars on the road, it's going to get worse, worse for the residents of Arrowhead. Nobody else cares about anybody else, so it's just going to be worse for us. Last but not least, you know, you have not heard this mentioned, but I'm assuming since there's going to be apartments, there will be some children going to school in Marlton. Are the buses going to stop on Maple to pick up the students who are going to the high schools? Alright, yeah. How are these children going to cross the street to go to Evan's School? They're not going to get a ride through a bus. That's a traffic hazard right now, just for people living on Munger to go to CVS. Nobody wants to let us cross the street. One last thing I had, I'm just wondering, nobody likes to stop at lights. If this does go through, would there be lights put in, let's say, at Center Boulevard to avoid, or make the people decide, well, I'm not going to go down Maple because I'm going to get stuck at a light before I get into Main Street? This is only a thought. Thank you very much for listening to me and my complaints.
Good evening, Mr. Malloy. Spell your last name for the record, please.
M-A-L-L-O-Y.
Your address?
26 Offmire.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony or comments you are about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
So, earlier today, I was helped by Community Development to look at the plan and go through everything, so you were able to contact the applicant. Sorry. I was saying earlier today, with the help of Community Development, I looked at the plan, went through everything, and was able to go through the whole thing to look at what, you know, what was being required, what's being requested. Was able to contact the applicant and go through a couple of concerns, and they really addressed two out of the three concerns. The last one is still, I think, in the process of being addressed, just very talked about a little bit. And the one concern I had was, when you look at, if you think about it, where our building is, you can see it on this chart, we sit back a little bit up of South Maple, it's the one with the nice green white roof there. And so, this building will come out because it's closer to Maple. And so, my first concern is, when you drive north on South Maple, you're going to be looking at this left side elevation. Our building comes up to about, say, that third row of windows there. So, this is a big mass. Your first impression is not, you know, that's a nice streetscape, but your first impression is of this mass, which in scale to the existing building, it's a big impression. Sorry. Sorry. The idea, the thing that concerned me was the scale of our building, and the first impression when you come north on South Maple Avenue off of 73, is you'll see this left side elevation. And that is, at this drawing, isn't that interesting? You know, compared to all the other architecture that's on the street. So, they've addressed, they've started to address that issue by saying, okay, we can put in a, you know, a box window frame here, we can do additional moldings on the existing windows, which is a good start. My concern is just that first impression that you get, either coming north or south on Maple Avenue, you're seeing the side elevations first, not that front elevation. And that's really the, and like I said, they've addressed the other concerns regarding the sidewalk going to the shopping center, as well as the screening between their property and mine. That's all I have.
Thank you. Thank you. Joanne Pizarro, or Pizano. I apologize if I pronounced your name incorrectly.
It's Pizano, it's P-Z-Z-Z-A-T-I.
Thank you. Your address?
32 South Maple Ave, two doors down from the building. It's supposed to be.
Okay. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the comment or testimony you are about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you, ma'am.
Most of my complaints have been addressed. The main thing is the traffic. I live on that street, I put up with it on a daily basis, trying to get, make a left-hand turn, going north on Main, South Maple, it takes someone to be courteous to let me out. And it's, the same thing applies when you turn right and go towards the CVS. Traffic is horrific. One of the gentlemen said that it's a slow speed limit, but people don't obey that speed limit. I see flashing blue lights on my front window a few times a month, which means someone has been pulled over for breaking the law speeding on that road. It's a 35-mile, they zip down there, and the tractor trailer traffic is tremendous. You, Mr. Goldstein, said that the buildings were outdated. Well, yes, they are, but you realize you're in the historic district. Oh, yeah. In 1829. So, yeah, it's a bit outdated, but it's still there and it's still in decent condition. I think four-story 55 unit is a little too much. It's just, it looks like it's a little too big for the property that it's going to be sitting in. I agree totally with Mr. Myers, what he said about round Peggy Square Hall, it's just too large. And I object, too. So, this is also my first meeting in front of people, and I'll probably do my last, but thank you very much.
Winnie Kurno?
Please.
Okay, sorry. Not coming up?
No, she said no.
Okay, thank you. Ed Hartman.
Ed Hartman, H R T, 3 Florence Ave.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the comment or testimony you are about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I have two questions. My yard backs up to the school district, and every day when it rains, our yard becomes a lake now. Now, if they put this building up, it's coming off of Maple, and our yard gets damaged, who's going to be responsible for paying for the extra floods that's coming into our property? I mean, that's, I mean, every day when it rains, we get a leak in our yard, dam and the wall, they'll be on us. So, and they're saying they're going to do away with it, thank you, Bob? I mean, that's just creating more. And the other issue I have, I can see out my deck, CVS's thing in my yard, and there's an accident there once a week. And people come off of 73 doing 50 miles an hour, they don't slow down to 35. And somebody coming down CVS gets hit. I'm maybe exaggerating once a week, but I mean, it's quite a bit. And now, people are going to be coming down to the development, they're going to get hit because it's only two houses from CVS. It's a safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, that is the end of this.
One at a time, please. You can line up if you like, or you can wait. State your name, spell your last name for the record.
My name's Mike Gallagher, G-A-L-L-A-G-H-E-R.
Your address, please?
5 Florence Ave.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the comment or testimony you are about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you, sir.
I live next door to the previous speaker, and I can confirm that when we do have heavy rains, yes, the water just comes off of the administration building, it does flood our yards, and if it's a significant rain, it remains there for a couple of days. And my shed is actually, you know, right up to the floorboards with water, so I have to wear high boots just to get into the shed. So, obviously, there's drainage concerns. And with all due respect to the engineers that have testified, I mean, I personally avoid traffic all the time because it's just ridiculous. And what I do is cut through our own very Arrowhead section. So, we're seeing more and more traffic just skipping down those streets, and of course, they're trying to make time, so they come at a high rate of speed, and we still have kids who play in the street, and it's a, it's dramatic concern. It's dramatic concern. So, the other issue I wanted to talk about was the development. Of course, trucks will be coming in and out of that building space, and that's going to cause a lot of construction issues. And I don't know if the developer is a unionized contractor or not, but I could envision that if, if you're not a unionized outfit, that we're probably going to have some labor issues or disputes. You know, you've seen the big rats and stuff like that on the construction sites. I'm concerned that that's going to cause further, you know, exacerbate problems in our neighborhood and create more traffic issues. So, the other issue I'd like to talk about is the impact on property values. I haven't heard anyone talk about that yet, but, I mean, like Eddie Hartman, I'm a stone's throw from where you're developing, and I'd like to know about what the impact is going to be on property values. I also like to have an assessment on anticipating. I also like to have an assessment on anticipating crime increase or decrease based on the level of income that will be, of people that will be in those buildings. So, I personally don't want to look out my back door. I like looking at the ball field and watching a boys play. I don't want to see a four-story monstrosity, you know, right out my back door. So, I would, I agree with the previous speakers, building a huge building in a small confined space, that's really going to destroy our neighborhood. I would encourage this board, Mr. Chairman, I would encourage that any objection you can raise to the issue that the solicitor talked about, the bifurcated issues of not giving the waivers, please throw those impediments in the way and knock this project out. Thank you.
My name's Carrie Philip, 14 Snuff Box Lane. I don't live in the area, but I'm very involved with community development in another municipality of many years' experience.
Please spell your last name for the record.
Sorry. P-H-I-L-I-P.
Saying that, I wrote it down with two, two words. Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony or comment you're about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Okay, regarding traffic, I know it's a concern of the residents and it's horrible. I recommend some type of traffic calming measures. I don't know if anything's been investigated. At least we should put some type of signage out to restrict left turn movements, or if you have to permit them, to restrict them during peak hour traffic.
The problem with that is that this is a county road. This board doesn't have jurisdiction over those types of traffic calming measures on a county road. That complaint you can take to the county. Okay?
And how the county has been?
They've been consulted through the process and an application has been filed, Mr. Goldstein? So there's an application pending.
Okay. So we would have to go before county to ask for some type of measure?
On the county road, yes.
Okay. Also, I'm also concerned about the parking spaces on the street and a car driving on Maple Street going northbound, what if they wanted to get into that parking spot, how would they get to it? So that's, even if it's not during peak hour traffic, doing a U-turn on the street would be very treacherous. Also, I don't know, I guess it's also in Bobby County, but I don't know what the town is considering for the intersection of Main and Maple. In Princeton, where I work, we have roundabouts and they do work very well. I don't know if that's something that you consider to develop some direction.
They're not a bad thing. They're not a bad thing.
I wanted to make comments about the architecture of the building. To my opinion, the rear elevation is very jarring with the color of the white, the white doors of the garages against the wet brick. I don't think it blends at all and I would recommend perhaps doing the same red color for the base or just make it a nice earth color. Regarding landscaping, I can't believe there's only nine shade trees being installed along with some shrubbery. There is no green space being provided at all. Yes, there's a pedestrian connection to another heavily congested shopping plaza. There's no quality of life over there. There's, it's all asphalt and it's horrible. And regarding the redevelopment plan, I know you envisioned 55 units. Is that also four stories? Is that also what was envisioned?
That is what's provided for in the redevelopment plan.
That is what is provided.
Yes. The underlying zoning code for the area was, to the extent it was modified by the redevelopment plan, provides for four stories or 55 feet with some architectural give in that 55 feet.
Okay, that is it. Thank you.
My name is Jean Hughes, I live at 18 Florence Avenue. I have some concerns.
Before you start, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right. Last name, spell that for the record.
H-A-T-G-A-S.
And state your address again.
18 Florence Avenue.
Thank you. Sorry, I have to keep track. All right. Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the comment or testimony you're about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Number one, I've lived in the area since 1978. Every morning I try to get out Oak to get onto Maple to go to work. I have to beg people to let me out. There is a sign there that says, "Do not block the intersection." It may as well be in Chinese, Russian, or whatever, because people do not abide by that sign. Now I'm hearing that the county has been, it has been requested from the county to put up signs saying that there can be left turns or right turns. How is that going to affect Oak and Muncher?
There's been no request made. The comment was made that this board consider it could, requiring that it's a condition of any approval. And the response was that's not under this board's jurisdiction, so that would be something that the county would address.
Well, that's something that our residents are going to have to think about if the sign's going to come up telling us that we can't make a left or right turn.
And I don't think that's what she meant. She may come in out of the driveway for this, for this development.
Okay. Another thing that just hit me, there's 55 units, does this, is this property pet-friendly?
Yeah. Ah, big problem.
Okay. I live 18 Florence. I had to have the township put a sign up outside my house, "Pick up your dog poop." I have people walking past my house all the time. Most of the people are fine and they comply. These people are going to be living in this asphalt jungle. We would go across the street and we have trees and sidewalks and ice mors. This is a nice place to take a bite over a walk. I don't want any more dog poop. I don't want to have control of my property. And now there are dogs and there are people that their dogs poop right in front of that sign, which is a joke. Because when they might want company and they pass it, they get out of the car, they step in. So that's another concern. My main concern is the traffic, trying to get in and out of, in and out of my neighborhood. If I don't get home by a certain time, I have to come down Maple, cut into Cedar, get onto North Locust, go down by the Walmart and come home that way. Or if I'm lucky, go up to Main Street, make a left, and then go down and cut into Main Streets just to get home. So now you're going to put this building over there, you're going to put on-street parking. The people that come to the ballparks on Oak there, they park all over the street, which is fine. They can't find enough parking. They're going to be parking on those six spaces over there on Maple. And the games start at all hours and it lasts for all hours. So this is another, another traffic issue. That's all.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 48 Oak Avenue.
Spell your last name for the record, please.
T-O-M-A-N hyphen L-O-G-A-N.
Raise your right hand, please. Do you swear or affirm the testimony or comment you're about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I have some common sense and questions. First of all, I think it was very kind of the township to give consideration to Mr. Davis and his entourage and not so comprehensive of them to consider the rest of us, the vast majority of arrowhead people, sitting here who most likely started their workday long before the sunlight went up and had other obligations. We didn't get the consideration. In terms of the notification, you said that that was a law, 200 feet radius?
I didn't say radius.
Or 200 feet from the property. I'd like to know, is that a local law, state law?
State law, part of the municipal land use law.
Clearly it's outdated and perhaps, you know, we need to reexamine that somehow. I guess we have to contact our state.
Your local legislature, okay.
Because obviously the impact of this is far greater than 200 feet. In terms of, also in terms of the presentation tonight, I was the one who yelled from the back of the room, why can't we have this on a tablet and put it up on the, you know, the visual so that everybody could see them? I mean, that's 21st century, we are in 2015 at this point in time.
That requirement's not written into the code.
I'm just saying, perhaps that's something to be considered in the future. In terms of the drainage and community development certainly can attest to this because they know our property well. We, and I can just speak from my perspective, my home at 48 Oak Avenue receives a considerable amount of drainage from the property, the groundling property behind me, the property beside me. Anybody who drives past tonight, you'll see a creek running through it with a big puddle in the front and a big puddle in the street in front, because the drainage isn't good and it inundates our property. So, filling the drainage at the end of that street is really going to make even more problems for all of us along Oak Avenue. I'd like to know what a cultural resource study is and why it was waived and what, you know, impact that may have had on these proceedings.
The cultural resource study was not waived. It was in the redevelopment plan, it was designated that redevelopment in this area did not require it.
Does not require what?
Does not, it is not required for development in this redevelopment area. That's in the redevelopment plan.
Okay.
This board can only require an applicant to submit, with the ordinance for redevelopment plan in this case requires the applicant to submit.
Okay. Again, cultural resource, I don't, I'm new to this, so I understand that. And again, it'll have impact on our property taxes as well. And a comment about the number, do we have a number as, in terms of the amount of accidents right there by the C V S crossing over on an annual basis? Because as Mr. Hartman said, it has to be considerable. And anybody who's walking along there or driving along there any time of the day, you know, is certainly in danger. I don't believe it was mentioned also that there is a, an adult living facility that is being constructed currently just across 73 on Center Boulevard. I don't know that that was factored into the amount of traffic as well. Okay. And I think, I think that's all I have. Thank you.
Please state your name.
Trish Everhart.
Address?
25 34. Ms. Grant.
Please raise your right hand. Thank you. Do you swear or affirm the comment or testimony you're about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I just, I just had two questions. I came in late, I was at another meeting, and so I just want to understand, is it, is it first floor, all garage, on the left, is it first floor, all garage, and then four stories? Or is it four stories including the first level garage?
The applicant can answer that question. Think from the access from the street, their testimony, and they can correct me if I'm wrong, I'll pause this for a second. Their testimony, the way I understood it, was that it's first floor units on, there are units on the first floor access from the street. The garages are in the back and they're all, so it's first floor in the back is garage, first floor in the front are units. Is that accurate?
Yes, so part of it is four stories and part of it is like three stories and a garage.
Right.
So I apologize if this was wrong, but I was human.
No, that's okay.
And so, I guess I wanted to understand why it's okay to be, I'm doing this, so I'm sorry if you said four, but why we're okay with exceeding the three levels?
Well, we're not exceeding. What happens is, and I did explain this at the beginning, so you didn't have the benefit, no, that's fine, you didn't have the benefit of this. With the redevelopment process, which is how this application actually came before the board, the culmination of that process, as part of that process, the committed township governing body will adopt a redevelopment plan. And that modifies the underlying zoning requirements to accommodate or to accomplish the goals that are in the plan. So, to the extent that the redevelopment plan and the underlying zoning would conflict, the redevelopment plan will control. In this case, the redevelopment plan provides for four stories, 55 feet.
Okay.
So the underlying zoning that conflicts with that no longer controls, the redevelopment plan controls.
Okay. And so, the, in keeping with the flavor of, I think someone stated it was historic district, I'm not sure if it still is, but I guess, how is that visual endorsing that? I guess, and I'm not trying to be arrogant or by any means, I just want to understand how that look is going to be good if you're going to develop that, that part of the town and you want to have, I just don't know that that's in keeping with these properties that come subsequent to that. I think that Ruben Sparks Building, you know, it was redone and it's all under Cooper Law and it's kind of with the flavor of the houses that follow after that. So I don't know that this, this seems to be like abrasive to the eye, but no disrespect intended, but I just was wondering, is there any way that it can sort of take some characteristic, historic characteristic upon itself? If you're going to make adjustments, can you make it look a little bit more suitable to historic district and not such a, to that other gentleman's point about how it's just going to be so overwhelming visually from the street? I mean, if you want people to come here and be destination, you don't want to look like everything else. You want to be of that small-town character feel. So just want to know, is there any way that that stuff can be adjusted or that's beyond at this point? Can be adjusted at all?
That's up to the applicant. The board has to consider the presentation, the application as it was presented to it. So what you see is what was presented to the board.
And is there any way it could be made smaller? Can it be, not a 55 units ever?
That's also up to the applicant. He's, they have proposed an application or a development within, that meets the set and satisfies the requirements of the redevelopment plan.
So for me, for the people in the room and for me, based on what you're hearing tonight, could these things be adjusted? They could be smaller? Could it look different?
The board doesn't have the power to force the applicant to revise its plans and come back again. We, our jurisdiction is to consider what's presented to us. So this board will consider the application as it has been presented. And I say, consider. I, you know, that's, that board considers it, it takes action on what's been presented. We have no jurisdiction to go back to the applicant and say, you have to change your plans, especially since all the testimony has been that the plans that they presented are conforming with the redevelopment plan. So this board doesn't have the authority to force them to go back to the drawing board.
Okay, so, again, no disrespect, but for those of us in the room, we're doing this and it might not change, we're just, we're just letting everybody know how we feel, but it's not, it could possibly just not change, it could just go ahead and that's it. I guess I'm wrong.
I don't know how to say, I don't, I'm repeating myself. The board has to consider the application as it was presented. That's the best I can tell you. The board will make a motion to approve or a motion to deny, but it's based on what's been presented to the applicant. If the applicant is willing to address concerns of the public and go back to the drawing board, we can't force the applicant to do that.
And the only way, again, helping with the process, the only way that this gentleman could do, you're the one, okay, sorry, sorry, I can't, sorry. So, the only way he could do that is if you all said, if it was no, could he then go back?
If it's no, then he doesn't have, he doesn't, this application as presented doesn't get approved.
Okay.
And he would have to come back to this board with what the law considers a substantially amended application.
So this dialogue we're having tonight is just for everybody to understand everybody's feeling, but?
It's part of the public, it's part of the public process set forth in the municipal land use law.
Mrs. Walters, it sounds though like she's asking why no one's responding to her questions and I think the answer is that we, everyone has come forward and, oh, it sounded like you wanted replies and I just wanted to, the board.
Well, quite frankly, I think she's the only one I've been replying to.
Yeah, that's what I said.
You've shared comment on everybody else until the end, but you had procedural questions, I was trying to, I was trying to.
Oh, yeah, I didn't think she wasn't answering. I just wanted to understand, like, what, do you, do these people get some resolution today only with a no or?
The municipal land use law is set up this way. This is, the board has limited jurisdiction and power, that's our power. If they came to us with an application that required multiple variances, you know, then we have a little bit more power to try to require some, set some conditions of approval. But that still is not authority to tell the applicant they have to go back and start over. That's not, that's not our authority. Our authority is, the only role we have here on the municipal land use law is to consider the application that has been presented to the board.
Okay, one last thing. The only time maybe that you had the opportunity to hear all this is now. all this is now.
No, this application wants to-
No, you can hear how they feel. This is the only time you was able to go to hear it, right?
Yes. Not necessarily. The testimony from a preview, I'm going to use the testimony from Mr. Malloy as an example. Mr. Malloy came in today, went over, looked at all the plans, reviewed all the, all of the board's professionals' comments and reports. They're reduced to a written report. They were in the file. He was able to review those. He was able to get the name and contact information of the developer and the developer's attorney. And he was able to reach out. They spoke today on and off about his concerns. And the applicant actually started to address some of his concerns. That rate is available to everybody. These applications are always on file. They're public record. They're available for inspection at the time that the application is deemed complete. And individuals who are entitled to 200-foot notice get that at least 10 days in advance. So, that's their opportunity to come in.
All right. Thank you, Walter. Thanks for bearing with mind.
No problem.
For seeing this stuff. Thank you.
Well, I mean, I don't know how many people we have left. The option is to continue or then finish it out.
There's no official closure time. It was just policy. And I recommend we finish it soon.
Please state your names, spell your last name.
Marie Norhoss, N.O.R.C.R.O.S.S., please.
Your address, please.
23 Arrowhead Drive.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the comment or testimony you're about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank you all for listening to all of us. I do live in the Arrowhead section, which is in the neighborhood in which this is being proposed. And I'm just asking that you consider our neighborhood because of the traffic. I live on Arrowhead and Locust. And when people are coming off of 73, like someone else mentioned, they aren't going 35. They're going 50, 55, 60. And they're not necessarily slowing down. My husband and I, we walk to Trader Joe's on the sidewalks that are available currently. And you have to be really careful when you cross over Maple Avenue because the traffic is so congested and people are going very fast. So, please keep that in mind when you make your decision because it really will impact our neighborhood greatly. That's all I really have to say. The traffic seems to be a little bit easier because of the circle being abolished. And now it seems like we're going backwards. And we're going to just have this congestion even worse. And I think the people that live in this complex are going to have a really difficult time looking in and out. And I know that that's really not going to be a problem until they move in there. But, I can't see how they would be able to do that with ease because people are not very courteous on Maple. They want to go where they're going and they want to get there yesterday. Thank you very much.
Hi. State your names, spell your last name for the record.
Davis Marvy, A.K.A. R.V.Y.
Your address, Mr. Marvy?
10 Arrowhead Drive.
Thank you. You've got your right hand up. Thank you. Please, I'm sorry. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to provide or comments you're about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
First off, I want to mention that many, many, many years ago, I stayed in Allison Apartments for about four years. I wanted to thank Mr. Davis. It was a wonderful opportunity. Since that time, 37 years, I've been living in Arrowhead, 10 Arrowhead Drive. I've noticed a lot of congestion in the area, particularly down, when people come off of Route 73, like someone has already mentioned, they're going pretty fast. They make a right-hand turn. If they know the best way to get through Marlton is to go down Arrowhead and left on Locust, a lot of them do know that. And it's increased the congestion in the area. This will only result even more. One of the questions I had, and I haven't heard brought up yet, the shopping center that's behind this development, will there be access through the apartment complex through the back of that development, through that back of that shopping center?
I believe that testimony-wise, there will be pedestrian sidewalk?
I'm not talking about that. I'm talking about car access.
No, there will be no traffic, there will no, testimony-wise, there is no traffic access between the two lots.
Okay, that's, that's one of the questions I had. So, everyone that's going to be coming in and out, the two access, there's going to be a two-access point off of Maple Avenue. Am I correct there?
One.
Only one. So, so everybody's going to be coming in and out of the same place, correct? I mean, there's not, there's not even an entrance and an exit. It's just both coming in and out of the same point on, to Maple Avenue?
Yes.
Okay. Is this going to be wide enough for two vehicles? Or is it just one vehicle could be?
It's wide enough to accommodate somebody coming in and somebody coming out.
Coming in and coming out at the same time. Okay. The other issue I was wondering about, and I've heard the question was brought up, and I just want to address some concerns of this particular application, the, putting the on-street parking. It sounds like to get to the 99 that we had, someone decided that now we're going to have on-street parking on Maple Avenue. Theoretically, in the future, we'll have lots of on-street parking on Main Street and on Maple Avenue. I don't think that this is an advantage. I don't think the roads are wide enough for this. The other question I had is, we're talking about bumping the curb in so it'll allow for the six parking spots on the street. Is there a sidewalk that's going to have to be moved because of that? I haven't been down there in a quite some time.
That question I can't answer, yes.
Yes.
There is. Is that that brick sidewalk we spent a million dollars on many years ago? So, we're going to have to move the brick sidewalk?
Well, Mr. Davis is, and he's going to pay for it.
Well, okay. They used to have plaques in there that commemorated the historic buildings in the area. We are, I don't remember, Mr. Winter at 24 South Maple had a plaque on his. But, would that continue to be there? Or are we going to just, because the house is no longer there, we're not going to honor that particular location? That's the question.
I don't have an answer to that.
Okay.
If there was something to start with, we would look into that. To my knowledge, there's not.
Okay, all right. I know there is a lot, I know there are a lot of them there. I think you addressed most of my concerns. Like I said, I agree with most of the other people here. The traffic is going to be horrendous. And please take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Yes, almost. State your name, spell your last name for the record, please.
My name is Kathleen Santomero, S.T.N.T.O.M.C.R.O.
Your address, please.
Legacy, 224 Legacy Oaks.
Raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the comment or testimony you're about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
I hope I'm your last comment for the morning. And it will be a comment. I don't have any questions. I think that there have been so many questions and so many answers. And I do know Mr. Davis quite well on his properties, including Allison Apartments and Sage More. And I think if you had an apartment developer, you've chosen a good one. I do believe that the residents of Arrowhead need some extra consideration from this planning board with regard to this particular rehabilitation site. Their community, our overall community, is being bombarded with rehabilitation and redevelopment at this time. I've lived here for 38 years. And the people in Arrowhead have lived there a long time, too. We kind of grew up together, as Mr. Davis has also in this area. I'm asking the planning board to consider what's happening in our town as an overall consolidated rehabilitation and redevelopment effort. 55 apartment units in a four-story building on Maple Avenue. Would we have conceived of this in our wildest dreams even 20 years ago? I don't think so. I don't know how we got here. But, we need to truly think about the magnitude of the apartments that are planned to commit to this community at this time overall. Not just Maple Avenue. I'm here to support my fellow residents here in Arrowhead. I live on the other side of town. I have a 264-unit apartment complex coming in near me with my $400,000 home that may be worth a lot less than that here soon. But, I believe the planning board, their duty to the community is to plan accordingly the needs of the community and appropriately. And I don't think that we can take these things in silos and make decisions about them. They need to be made in aggregate for the overall good of the communities everywhere. Within a three-mile stretch, we have close to 700 apartments planned here. Redevelopment is going to happen. It's going to go on without us. I'm getting rarer every day. But, it's going to happen. And we have to let the future come. But, I do believe we need to modify the growth that we're considering here. Too many other important aspects, concrete aspects of shop rights and grocery stores and roadways have to be thought of and planned for as part of the planning board's responsibility. Think about all of us that have lived here for all these years. We're not saying, "Don't build it, Mr. Davis." We're saying, "Consider us. Think about it. Modify your plan and good conscience to the community, to the residents of Arrowhead, to the residents of Legacy Oaks, or any other neighborhood. We live here. We've been driving here for 38 years. Hasn't gotten any easier. Not going to get easier. But, let's try to modify the plan so it fits with our community and with the development needs that we truly need here. A little small-town eager-keeper, a little main street with some retail shopping and some new apartments. That would be great. We'd all embrace it." But, four stories, 55 units, three stories, 26 units, four stories, 344 units, Arrowstone project with 264, add them up. It's too much and too small of an area. Please, I ask, think of this in aggregate. Do not think of this as a silo in the Maple Avenue project. Think of this and all of us when you make this decision. I realize there's nothing we're going to say or do here tonight that will change it. If they've met the scope of what they have to fulfill, they've fulfilled it. That's the end of it. But, aren't we the community first? Isn't that how you all got your seats there? Weren't we neighbors first? Let's think about the community in our days. I thank you for your consideration. I wish you good night. I hope we all sleep well. And you have a good night.
I'm Lynn Sloane, 43 Oak Avenue, Mark, excuse me, Mark.
Please spell your last name. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the comment or testimony you're about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I want to say, first of all, there is no, uh, forgetting at any time. It's always the same coming down Maple Avenue. When you go out, you can't go out. Then you come back. You back up traffic beyond the light and then all the way down to Route 70, any time of day. It's not just in the morning and in the evening. It's all day long. And I think this building aesthetics does not suit our community and especially the surrounding area. We already have a three-story building on Main Street, just a block away, not even a block, maybe a half block. Four stories, it's going to stick out like a sore thumb. It's not going to be aesthetically beautiful as our little town is now. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne D. Knight, D.E. Capital Management, 24 Florence Avenue.
Thank you. Sorry.
That's all right.
Do you swear or affirm the comment or testimony you're about to provide to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Just a quick, just two comments. I'm not meaning comment on the traffic. You've heard enough. And I live with the traffic. One of the things that we were just discussing, when the virtual hospital, which was Guard State was built back in the early 70s, I know all the men who were here were engineers and whatever, and I have an engineer as a son. But, one of the things you don't realize is when that hospital was built, Arrowhead was flooded. I don't know many of yous were there at the time. We all had to deal with flooded basements. We all had to get all different types of waterproofing. So, you can tell me about retention ponds. You can talk to me about pipes. You can talk to me about anything. Florence Avenue figured out how far that is from the hospital. And we got on date it. We were there about eight years, never had a drop of water. I finished my basement, and guess what? I had to pull up carpeting and everything else. And I looked up the street and all my neighbors were doing the same thing. So, just remember, engineers can tell you anything. God sends rain. Okay? That's number one. Second of all, they're supposed to be luxury apartments. Now, if I want a luxury apartment, I'm going to sit in my apartment, go out on my terrace, and you know what I don't want to see? I don't want to see garbage trucks. And I don't want to see it back of the building. So, Mr. Davis, you're going to put up these beautiful buildings and apartments. You're going to put a terrace in the back. Do you really think someone's going to sit on that terrace with their pub of coffee or their vodka and look at the back of a, of, of, of the apartment, of the shopping center? I worked at the shopping center. And let me tell you, those trucks come in, they go out. And they don't, and it's loud, and it's noisy, and it stinks. So, there I am, thinking about it.
Anybody else? Someone in the public wish to speak on this application?
Can I just ask one more question, Mr. Davis? The 55 units-
Can you need to step forward there. We need to get it recorded on the record.
I was already sworn in, so.
The 55 units-
I'm just going to remind you, you're still at Arrowhead, that's all.
55 units. Are they, are those garages being rented to those 55 units or are they being rented separately? So, there's potential for additional rental from the garage and-
No, 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 no. They're, they're service only the apartments, are they not? I think he misunderstood your question.
Is that what you just said?
There are 18 additional projects, first come, first served. And yes, it's additional income.
It's additional income above the 55 apartments?
No.
Or potentially, so you could be, you could have somebody renting a garage. Is it necessary they're renting a, a parking lot?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And you've been previously sworn, you're still at Arrowhead?
And you know, the question just is, a variance versus waivers, what was that mean? I know you-
A waiver is usually something that's given for a deviation from a design requirement. And a variance is usually something that's set by statute that's required to be granted by statute. It's a deviation from other requirements.
Is it easier to just give waivers and it's harder to get a variance? Is that?
The criteria, the criteria that need to be met to justify a waiver is different than a variance, yes.
And there's a lot of waivers involved in this process?
There are four waivers involved that impact-